Hi there, Susan, how are you?
How are you?
All right. I'm, um. I'm feeling it. I'm, I'm all sorts of positive attitude for the Celtics.
We're, we're gonna. Are you?
Yeah. A four game sweep. Here we go.
That's right. That's right.
I believe.
At this point. Oh, no, we're not going to get that. We're not getting. I, I actually hope it's over tonight. Just because they have such bad attitudes.
Oh, there you go. Right.
Just awful. They don't deserve it right now.
That is true.
My thought. I usually have a strong thought. To a fault.
That is all for the good. Strong thoughts.
Hockey. I'm interested more in the hockey, actually.
Okay. Yes. Um.
I did make a delivery. I put it in your mailbox.
I saw that. The, uh, this, the sign and, um, the. Yeah. Eight Albion Street and, uh, five Lantern Avenue. So.
I got those this morning.
Wow, great. Hey there, Matt. How are you?
Good. How are you doing, guys?
All right.
Susan, so.
I left stuff in your mailbox.
Uh, yep, we found it. Thank you.
Good stuff. What a, um, an impressive town meeting. Nineteen. Nineteen warrant articles in, in what? Three hours, two hours, two and a half?
I can't really comment because I wasn't there, but it was a sad showing. Were there sixty people there?
Sixty committed people.
Sixty committed.
Theo, uh, Bill Spalding texted me and said that he's running about ten minutes late.
Okay, all right. Gotcha. Thanks. All right. Well, it's nice to see you, Jim. It's nice to see you, Kevin. Yeah. All right, well. We've got a quorum. Aaron will not be joining us tonight. She also sent a message that, uh. Um, she'll make it to the, the next meeting. So let's, uh, let's call ourselves the order. Um, a quick roll call. But, um, Matt Lowery.
Yeah.
Kevin York.
Here.
Jim Hogan.
Here.
And myself, Theonall here. So, um. Better quorum. Um. And, uh, so the minutes from May ninth have been circulated and has, uh, anybody, um, have any edits or comments to them? No. I would agree. All right. Um, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the May ninth twenty twenty-three minutes as presented.
All right, thank you. Any, a second?
Second.
All right, all right. We're, we're gonna put Kevin down as, uh, getting him, uh, on the record and, uh, all in favor. Uh, Matt Lowery?
Yes.
Kevin, you, Kevin?
Yes.
All right, Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The, um. Uh, so the next, um, the next item, um. We can. You know, want to rush things, uh. Through, um, but we can catch Bill up when he comes in, um, or, or, uh, separately, that's, uh, after the meeting. The, uh, the third item on our agenda is the MBTA communities, uh, update.
So we had a, I would say, uh, group successful meeting of the MBTA working group. Uh, last Tuesday, at that working group, we discussed, uh, the refinements associated with the. Zoning area that would be needed for compliance with the state. At the time, based on analysis that was conducted by our, since, uh, zoning consultant, as well as Aaron. And the maps, they determined that the inclusion of the green, the working group had been issued in a. Zone around Wakefield Junction and the zone around Greenwood appears from a compliance model's perspective. The, unless we were going to significantly, uh, densify or allow greater density than what would was originally envisioned by the working group. The Greenwood zoning is, would not be helpful from a compliance model perspective. Without getting into the weeds, the lots around Greenwood are significantly bigger and impact some of the minimum densities. So the working group is looking around, looking at a, uh, zoning area that around Wakefield Junction. That would be for the purposes of compliance with the MBTA state requirements solely. In addition, the working group identified and discussed high level, um, that there may be other locations. Uh, within the town that we're interested in looking at in terms of from a good policy perspective, not for a state compliance. Uh, perspective, that there may be interest in expanding the number of locations that are under evaluation. So right now, the, the next step is that. Aaron and our consultants are gonna go back, refine some of the maps that would be needed for compliance with the state. And then the working group is gonna evaluate and discuss other options for, you know, kind of. Compliance plus zoning that would be passed all at once. The other thing to put on people's radar is we're going to start looking at. What the actual drafting, the bylaw is gonna look like. I anticipate that's a conversation that's gonna kick off in earnest at the next working group model, but more to come. Um, we still feel very confident that the timeline discussed regarding getting a draft bylaw out kind of late summer. Is still feeling like it's pretty attainable from based on the progress that you've been seeing to date. I think all the conversations are very productive. I would also note for anyone in the meeting today, or anyone who may be listening at a later date, there is. On the planning board website, a webpage with the irrelevant information in terms of the MBTA community. The whole effort to date, there will be a bunch of the relevant presentations, as well as information of the working group as they're moving forward. So if you want to follow along, you can find, uh, meetings that have been posted on, on that website, as well as relevant minutes. And presentations and reference materials.
Nice.
Yeah, um. Uh, yeah, um, hats, hats off to you and Jen McDonald, um, at Town Hall for, um, keeping that, that updated. Updated and, uh, really useful. So, so it's a really good resource. Can, um. Would you mind talking a little bit about, um? So. Is it no, no district around Greenwood? Um, or?
See, so, yeah, if we just take a step back, what we need to do is we need to produce a map that will be, that would, that meets certain number of. Requirements that as laid out by the state. We believe we can develop a map that can be in compliance with the state. On the basis of a zone around Wakefield Junction by itself.
Okay.
That being said, we, we, the members of the working group have identified the thought that. As a pub, matter of public policy and for introducing a, a multifamily overlay district. Regardless of if it's for compliance or not, there are other areas, Greenwood being the most prominent. That it would make sense from a policy perspective to have some similar zoning pass concurrent with the. The zoning for compliance with the state. So you end up. Passing one district potentially, that would be a little bit bigger than what you need in order to comply with the state. And then you'd only take the section around Wakefield Junction and submit that to the state for their review and approval.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Now that. Um, it sounds, it sounds really thoughtful and it didn't, uh, I didn't consider the. You know, so, some of the, you know, the barriers to. Uh, creating a district around Greenwood. So that's, that's useful and that, that's. Obviously, gonna be part of the public discussion process.
And I think the advantage of that is that it frees us from some of the constraints associated with the law. If this, the area around Greenwood, for example, is not, does not need to comply with. The particularities of, uh, MBTA law because we're complying via the Wakefield Junction area. So it allows us a little more flexibility to be, to be a little more thoughtful in terms of how we shape that. That zoning.
Yeah.
And, and obviously, you know, Matt, if, if you think I'm mischaracterizing anything, you know, I'm more than happy to have you correct me on any of the things I just said.
No, that's, that's pretty accurate. Um, I know one thing we're doing is. Uh, the area, um. Um, Wakeville Station, we're making it. Actually, we're, we're purposely making it a little bit larger than it needs to be. Um, just because we know when we get in discussions with people, there's, there's gonna be certain areas that will be taken out potentially because of. Proximity, walking distance, sidewalks, things like that. Um, we kind of expanded the area. To include more of the downtown area to get the density, not only to. The transit, but also to the business district. So. You'll, you'll see an area that is actually larger than it needs to be. That's by design at this point in order to. Basically to engage more people and, and to be able to pare it down. Uh, with people's input. So we don't want to have something that's pigeonholed that. We say you need to accept this. That's it. We've got no options. So. And then the, the equitable, equitable factor of bringing Greenwood, we still believe that that. Uh, should be, should be on the table because we don't want this all hoisted on one section. We want to make sure that everyone's.
Right.
Some of the benefits, let's say.
Oh, good.
And the other one of, oh, I was gonna say, the one other thing in closing that I just want to put on people's radar. And I think some members of, of the planning board have, have, have started to think about this, but. You know, soft target August first is when we were talking about potential trying to get some sort of draft. As I said, that's not a hard and fast rule for the working group.
Yeah.
What happens after we get that draft bylaw? Between then and, you know, right now, we had targeted, where we talked about targeting the spring town meeting. So, um. Just to put on people's radar, I, I'm, I've started to kind of work out at least the first pass of what that process could look like. I'm gonna be trying to reach out to, um, Theo, just to make sure, you know, making sure we're playing, you know, respecting the planning of the. The planning board, in terms of how our meeting cadence is gonna go, and engaging with, uh, Aaron to make sure that town staff can be supportive. And then I'm looking to start a conversation as soon as the next working group in terms of what that post. Post-working group draft looks like. And then, oh, I, my intent would be to push it to the rest, the planning board, and solicit feedback in terms of how we build a process such that. We can make sure that it's an open and transparent process where we allow members of the public to provide. Feedback such that if there is a reason to Matt's earlier point to make revisions, add, subtract. Move things around. We, we want to try to make sure that we're building enough, uh, wiggle room such that we can solicit that feedback. And then execute it before we hit, send something fully baked to town meeting. So, um, that's another, not, not, that we need to take, take action on as a board right now. But something that I'm working on trying to figure out, like, what makes sense logistically? And then I anticipate this, be sending it in the near term to this, to members of this group for, for input as it relates to, that's a process that makes sense.
Yeah. That's great. And, um. Yeah, it'd be really, uh, helpful to think about, uh, the process and the calendar and, and about, um. Yeah, what is the most effective way of engaging folks in the, the timing so that, yeah, so that it's successful? That's, that's helpful. And, um, yeah, and we certainly want to do that because we know concurrently, the bylaw review is gonna, gonna be, uh, unfolding. Um, although. We do have a, a little more information, but, uh, about that. The timing of that is going to be more extended. We'll talk about that in a second. Um. Any other sort of questions or comments, Kevin? Um, do you have any?
I don't think so. He was pretty. Pretty good overview informative.
Yeah, okay. Um, agreed. Um, so. That's, uh, that's really helpful. So, and again, um, Jim, thanks for the, the website and, uh, keeping all of this, uh. Sort of current and in the public, public eye. So, all right, um. Our fourth item is the zoning bylaw review committee update. And. So the, um. All right, and we've got Bill Spalding. All right. Hey there, Bill. Um. We've, uh, we're opening up item four, the zoning bylaw review committee. Um. But, uh, but before, um, before we do that, Jim, do you want to give, uh, a quick thirty-second rundown on MBTA?
Sure, Bill. So what we just discussed about was we had a meeting. High level, we're gonna look at a compliance zone around Wakefield Junction that would be able to be compliant with the MBTA. Requirements from the state on, by itself. The reason being is that it, for reasons associated with geometry of lots and such, Greenwood isn't, isn't helpful for a compliance model. However, we're also looking at from a equ- equity standpoint, in terms of where we're citing this overlay district. We're looking at including portions of the town in the MBT overlay district, which would then not go to the state for compliance. So it'd be the minimum for the state, plus some extra things. We're anticipating that we're, we're still thinking that late summer is, is a deliverable for a draft bylaw. And then after that, in the near term, in the next couple of weeks, I'm gonna be looking for, um, to coordinate with Theo and Aaron. And then working group, planning board, in terms of from summer till. Spring town meeting, what does that process look like? Solicit feedback and provide an ability to adjust as required in order to make sure that. We're having a process that is open, transparent, fair, but also has the ability to, to adjust. To folks while also, you know, frankly, hitting the date for a town meeting for the springtime.
Thanks for the recap, Jim. Yeah, uh, yeah, that, that sounds like a good plan. Especially Wakefield Junction, as we know with Nahant. I don't know if you tuned into the town council meeting, or if you guys discussed the, uh, forty B at Nahant. But that's something that, uh, looking at the junction and how far that spreads out, how far down to hunt, what, how selective it is, would be interesting to see. Compared to like the pad site at Mike's Gym and our MG Fitness and other places around that could handle it. But, um, yeah, thanks. Thanks for the quick update. Glad to be here.
All right, you made it. As we are too. So, yeah. Excellent. Um, so we were going to move to our fourth agenda item, which is the zoning bylaw review committee update. Um. I'll start and Jim, you can fill in and, and others as well. And, oh, well, um. Uh, Kevin, do you, do you want to start? Is there anything from your side? Um.
We haven't had another meeting since the previous one, so no real updates on mine that I've heard of.
Okay. Um, yeah, so still, still on track for, um, the next meetings would be June. Fifth and, um. Uh, and then September eighteenth, right? Um. The, and so. Um, so we will, um, more than likely, uh, the week before June fifth, we'll get, uh, another. Set of draft memos from Attorney Bobrowski, um, and then come, come to the bylaw review committee meeting, uh, to discuss. I think we've had, um, uh, within this board, um, and, um, in other, other places. Um, some conversations about the effectiveness of the process and, uh, uh. How. How Dan Lieber and the, the bylaw review committee, um, are working with the consultant and, um. How they will, they will bring draft language, uh. To the planning board and others in town, uh, for review and comment. And, um. So. My understanding and, and Kevin and Jim, uh, uh, correct me if I'm sort of misstating it. Um, what we're getting right now from the attorney is sort of concept language helping to highlight. Uh, specific, uh, themes or topics related to the overall, uh, writing of the bylaw. Um, so that, uh, hearing our feedback will, uh, help give some, uh. Uh, I think some guidance to Attorney Bobrowski on how to write the entire thing. Um, and so the. The sections we received, uh, at the last meeting, sections one, five, and ten, um, are not necessarily fully meant to be. The fir- the first draft of those sections. Um, there's going to be additional, uh, work, additional sections that. From other parts of the bylaw that may get merged into those. And so we, we may see substantively different, uh. Formal drafts, uh, of those sections when, when they come. Um. And, um, and then so the, the timing process is. Uh, still unknown, but I think, um, headed with the goal of spring twenty twenty-five town. Uh, town warrant, town, town meeting, um, to review. So that would, uh, we would work with the, uh, all the parties to. Fill out the calendar for next year, um, uh. As, as that, as that unfolds. Um. And, you know, the, it's still.
Yeah. Do you mind if I step in for a second?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Sure.
So I think right now, Attorney Bobrowski, in terms of his process, he, we've already done two of his four, what he's. Calling theme meetings. And so the, the balance of the meetings at the June fifth and the September eighteenth meeting will be the conclusion of his theme meetings. Where he's taking specific sections, asking for high-level feedback with that initial draft. From a process perspective, after the theme meetings, that's when Attorney Bobrowski is anticipating on issuing his first draft. Of the entirety of the bylaw in one go. My understanding of the way it was explained to me by, uh, Chairperson Lieber was that, at, due, at that time, Attorney Bobrowski would identify. The. As he called it at the last meeting, the sushi menu of options from, that need to be made by the town from a series of public policy prescriptions. One of the, the mechanisms that Dan strongly advocated for was. Engagement in the theme meetings, which I think this board has been well represented at. Uh, in addition, written but not formalized comment, you know, whether that be red lines or other. Written comment that could be utilized to, by co, be collated by Attorney Bobrowski. To help identify all the different sections within those bylaws that need to have. Policy choices decided. From my understanding, you know, after that. After the, that first bylaw has been writ, you know, issued. Again, the opportunity for written comment is the preferred method of feedback by the bylaw review committee. But it still has not been defined. And I think the bylaw review committee indicated willingness to engage. In terms of how do they define that decision-making process? Um, it still hasn't been clear to me in terms of, you know, the, what that, that looks like. There was a, a email thread that was started between the chairperson, chair, chairman of. Planning boards, ZBA and bylaw review committee, in order to kind of set something up to define what that process is gonna be. Um, you know, after that, you know, going, how do you go from revision one to revision two? That's the part that still is unclear. But I think from this board's perspective. The feedback we're getting is written comment to the bylaw review committee, not in a formalized letter that, you know, goes, you know, but it's. More informal is the preferred method. And then the, that revision of the bylaw, number one. We could probably expect sometime in Q three, maybe early Q four of twenty-three. And then that process from there hasn't really been defined. Chairperson Lieber did indicate a willingness and frankly, um, uh. You know, he advocated, you know, basically that if we have com- comments or questions regarding the, the process, to bring it to the next theme meeting. Which I do intend to do and ask, you know, I understand what is being described. You know, how we get to revision one, but from revision one to revision two, what does that process look like? And so. We, I did respond to, to the chair, asking and laying out kind of our understanding of the basic process. So you could give it to Attorney Bobrowski in advance, so we could have a productive conversation. So. We'll see what ends up happening and hopefully it, it ends up where we can all end up where. We, you know, are working efficiently and hopefully with each other as our board. The bylaw review committee and all the other relevant boards and committees.
Yeah, that's, that, that's really helpful. And, um, it is hard. I, I'm very sympathetic, uh, to the, the process. And how, how to have an inclusive, uh, discussion with such a large document and so many different stakeholders. Um, you know, Aaron has brought up the, the importance of making sure. Um, all the various, uh, boards and committees in town are able to participate and also, um, the various departments. Um, who have to administer a lot of this and who also will have, uh, really constructive feedback to give. To it. So, um. Yeah, there's, oh, uh, a lot to do to, so be able to, uh, uh, identify, receive the feedback and collate it. I know, um. Questions from Matt, Bill, um. Kevin, like, um, just in terms of how, how you're understanding the process or your questions about it and, uh, the ultimate, uh, decision-making.
That's pretty much how I've understood it as well from the new committee side. The ultimate decision-making based on non-zoning bylaws that we've reviewed in the past. Has generally been to get input from those other groups, um, whether it's conservation committee, police department, fire department, et cetera. Um, and then use that input to. Basically write the, the bylaw in a, uh, legally proper way. So I, I, I think the, based on what I've seen with past bylaws that we've worked on, that the final say is with the bylaw review committee. But in a way that tries to, that basically go in the direction that the, I'll call them subject matter experts recommend.
Okay.
Now, if there's, if there's, um. If there are differences between planning board and ZBA, for example, I don't know. If there are differences between planning board and ZBA, for example, I don't know how. We would sort those out.
If I could just add to, you know, appreciate the time that we're putting into this and. Willing to put more time to really straighten these out. Um, looking for consistency, um, thinking about how. As things come in piece by piece, how they're all tied back and really pushing that towards the. On the shoulders of the bylaw review committee to making sure that's happening and um. I, we've already talked about concerns and different things and I. Yeah, I guess my biggest concern is consistency. And as we know with our board and the ZBA. We need to. Work with these bylaws, uh, moving forward. So I think the better coordinated they are and. The easier our job will be and we'll be able to give the right message or at least point people towards like, we get a lot of questions. And it's just so, we'll hear, look at this section, read through this and it just makes more sense, I think. Um, to educate our board as well when we're preparing, when I'm preparing for a meeting after we get our, you know. Files to look at and whatever. I think it's um. I think it's crucial. So I'm glad we're part of it. Um. I'm still a little fuzzy and gray about like how much our part is. And so my biggest, biggest concern is that. We do receive the completed bylaw revisions at some point. In a year or whatever and a half. And we have. Short time to hold public hearings before. Town meeting. So if I would love at some point, um, and maybe it's after. Um, Bobrovsky is done, but maybe we look backwards from the timeline and say, okay, well, if this is the town meeting we're shooting for. Um, is it the whole bylaw that we're looking to go? Are we going to take it section by section? I think our board needs to govern that in a way. Because the hearings will be with us. Do we hold a series of hearings and make sure we have time? That it goes section by section. So the sections that we need to spend more time on, we can. And the other sections that aren't so much, we don't have to worry about. So I just want us as a board to not miss the opportunity to work backwards from when town meeting will happen. And make sure we have, I don't know, do we need? Four months minimum, I would say, before a town meeting. I don't know, Matt, if that's. Um, sounds like the right amount of time to. Give us time to review and hold the public hearings.
Should be plenty of time because there's going to be. Public input right before this. So what comes to us. Initially should be well vetted. If it isn't, then we'll see the process, how the process plays out. And again. We're not on board with this. We have some issues with it. It would be foolish for the bylaw review committee to, you know, bring up the town meeting. If the planning board's not going to support it, or as questions are, when people get up and ask us at our meeting. It's going to be doomed right from there. So it, it, it needs to be well vetted before it gets. To us. Because once it gets to us, it's, it's in its pretty final form. We, we hold public hearings on what is submitted, remember, to. Town meeting. So. This has to be well, well thought out, well.
And I do want to be clear. I, I think that all indications seem to be as if. You know, Attorney Bobrovsky's been down this road before. Seems like Chairperson Lieber is very conscious in terms of trying to solicit feedback. I think the more that I discuss the process with him, the more I be. There, the, the bylaw review committee's intent is to have the entirety of the bylaw in basically a, a single up or down vote. You know, I, I think from our board's perspective, you know, if that's the way that they're angling. We should, you know, if we're supportive of that approach, you know, I think that it's going to be. A lot more beneficial for us to have some level of. Even if it's not a formal engagement, but you know, members of this board attending these meetings, providing feedback because I think trying to. To go back and, and rebake the cake after they go through their process is going to be an exercise in pain. So I think that it's just going to be incumbent upon us to be engaged in the process. And that's why I think that, you know, understanding what happens after these theme meetings that conclude in September is important. But um, you know, I don't think we can really do anything else except for just continue to ask the questions. I think a lot of the members of this board have continued to ask.
Right. Um, I'm. I'm sort of uh, hearing that uh, we might want to have. Some agenda items, sort of us responding to the theme, the theme meetings that, that have been had. Um, and that, that would be another way to um, collate our. Questions or comments or our language. And then we'd be able to submit that uh, as, you know, additional follow-up from the, uh, from, from these meetings.
I, I think that it, it's likely that someone from this board. Probably should be, you know, redlining or going through some of these things. I, I, you know, maybe it's. Different members of this board do it separately and just, you know, basically identify all the issues. It sounds like the first pass. You know, with this rev one is supposed to be, you know, highly annotated with, you know, language. I've received feedback that this is in question, this is in question, this is in question. That's the way it was explained to me. So, you know, my intent at some point was to, if I ever get enough time to sit down and actually send, you know. Written, written copy of some of the things that we discussed last meeting, just to make sure that some of the things that I saw that I. Seemed concerning to me got addressed. I don't know if that's makes sense for us to do that as formally as a board. Or if it makes sense for people to, you know, send whatever comments that they have to the bylaw review committee on a independent case-by-case basis. That's, that was the way that they indicated they preferred it and as opposed to like a formalized letter from the planning board. So I think it's kind of depending on whatever other people's, you know, how, how much you. Feel like there's specific items that you want to highlight at this time.
It would, um, what are folks' reactions to that?
Well, if, if it's going to come from the planning board, it has to be consensus by all of us. We're going to have to. You know, spend a lot of our time in meetings discussing this to come up with a consensus. If it's going to be. You know, three people feel strongly that it should be a certain way. Then we each need to send a letter and, you know, while our review committee needs to weigh. The evidence they get is how they write it out. So. But just because the planning board might be pushing for one thing, that doesn't mean the bylaw review committee necessarily wants it. So. Does that mean we're not going to support it in the end? You know, we, we have to weigh the, if we're coming at this as a board, which again. We all need to be in agreement if we're coming out as a board or if we're coming at it as individuals. So. Um, I can understand why. The bylaw review committee might not want each board. You know, choosing sides on certain issues because um. You know, one of your kids is going to get left out cold. So, uh, and I'm sure they don't want to get into that. Right. Where they're alienating a whole group of people for a few issues.
I strongly agree with Matt. I think that we need to figure out how we want to approach it. As a board right now, a- a- and in terms of at least until we get to the, the first revision, right? After they have the first revision, if there's a formal mechanism that they're going to hold. Meetings or whatnot and talk about these issues and make choices, but they're not even at that point yet. And so I, I would strongly advocate that. For now, just highlighting the issues that you think that need to be discussed and, you know, not just copy paste from, from the last rezoning effort. I think that effort is something that I don't think necessarily triggers or warrants the attention from our board as a board. But if we have individual contributors who say, you know, this specific thing, I think it, you know, needs further review and thought. As opposed to just whatever was, you know, whatever's written on the page right now. I think that probably would be sufficient. And then once we have the full bylaw, I think. And, you know, whatever the adjudicating mechanism of the bylaw review committee chooses to, to pursue. Then we can figure out how we as a board want to respond at that time, if at all.
Yeah, it's, yeah, Bill.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm along for the ride. I'd like to be consensus from our board and, and really um, take the time to. To understand it. I think the discussions that we have together will help me be me more informed because I think together as a group will, will build a better. Um, product to deliver instead of just each of us delivering something. So. I like the collaboration side of it from our board. So if it does mean that we put it on the, the agenda and to discuss, once the revision comes through. Um, that, Matt, I think. I think that plays into it, right? Is it, um, it's almost like we have an either or. And I would love that our board collaborates together and has a consensus.
I think I'd rather go in that direction as well, instead of five individual perspectives and viewpoints.
As I say, I look forward to the conversation, uh, because so many times I think I know what I'm talking about because I'm reading about it, but then I hear a different perspective. And it makes so much sense and it just, it ties into it. So I think if we have that type of conversation, even if it takes a half hour to go over. Um, a couple of different bylaws, it, it just, I think it would just be a better product and we'll be better prepared because. We'll, we'll be more in tune. So when we do hold public hearings at some point, it will just be, um. I think we'll be able to help the public as well. Meaning help the public understand if there are any clarifications that are necessary.
So it sounds like we'd be open to. Having some planning board discussion about some topics or language that comes up. Uh, but not making a formal decision or, or recommendation. Uh, but that, that would help. Uh, I think thread the needle with our collaboration and our discussion, our working on it and then being able to give. Uh, some informed, informal uh, input to the bylaw review committee.
Well, I, I think Bill just stated that he'd rather come at it as a board so that we do come with consensus and present something back to them as. From the planning board. So. Um, you know, I, I'm fine with that. I'm just a little concerned of, of how. The bylaw review committee is going to take another board, you know, you know. Saying we really, we really still feel strongly about this, other boards come and. Have the opposing opinion or something. So that's, I'm, I'm looking at it as them getting put in a bind. Uh, boards coming down and. Dictating that we're not going to approve this unless we do this. And I don't know if they're going to see that or not, but perception could be there.
Right. I, I think that right now, you know, while Attorney Bobrovsky is doing the theme meetings, I think the best thing that we can do. Is we can just highlight things that we think require further review by the town. Because eventually after Attorney Bobrovsky does his first pass, he's going to hit a point where. He's going to say, okay, here's your draft revision, you as the town, now it's coming upon you to, to provide me guidance. And I think it's just a matter of, I, and so once we get from revision one, what that. Feedback loop to then get, provide guidance to Attorney Bobrovsky. That's the process that currently hasn't really been defined. And so that's the one that, you know, the, my intent is to interrogate that at the next meeting with Attorney Bobrovsky, what he's seen that's been successful. And I think through that process, depending on what, what that looks like, I think that would be when. It would make sense for us to potentially look at this as a board in a more meaningful manner. But until then, while he's going through these themes, I don't think that, you know, we're going to get these things. You know, like a week before, you know, the six, five meeting and then a week before the nine eighteen meeting. So I, I think that just like reviewing it live as a, as a large group is more of a brainstorming capacity with everyone at the bylaw review committee. In that form of Attorney Bobrovsky is probably going to be the most conducive to success. And then it's just a matter of making sure that all the different items that, you know, require thoughtful direction. Get picked up. So I think it's, to my mind, right now, we're almost in like a, like. Uh, decision identification mode as opposed to adjudicating individual decisions. If that. That's my read of it, but if other people feel differently, that, then. I'd be interested in understanding that.
Yeah, I, um, I have a little bit of a, a hard time uh, having thirty editors. Um, at the bylaw review committee uh, going over, over these memos. So, um. The, and I, 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 I do wonder like, what's the, what's the most effective process for those meetings? So.
But you, you kind of started at the, at the last bylaw review committee of certain people that dominated the conversation and. You can even sense the frustration in uh, Attorney Bobrovsky because. You know, he was getting bombarded. By certain viewpoints. So, um, I can understand how it's tough to do that. So I think letting him roll out what he wants to say and then reviewing it. You know, some tacit uh, suggestions would be good, but, you know. Exact wording and phrasing, they want to. Hold off on that just so we can get through the process.
All right. Um, so I, I think we'll leave it that. Once we receive the. You know, um, uh, the documents before June fifth, um, will individually review. Um, we won't have time to have a planning board meeting bef- before then. Um. Uh, we can submit our own uh, suggestions, um, both before the fifth and after the fifth. Um. I would like to uh. Keep an open item on the agenda if there are anything in particular that we would want to collaborate. Uh, or some concerns that, you know, we might have uh, asked, um. Based on the June fifth discussion, um, that. Perhaps not to uh, work on specific language, but topics again, uh, to Jim's point. Um, highlighting areas for further review that, um. And if, if we had, I mean, the, the good news is we are uh, viewed as the subject matter experts by the zoning bylaw review committee. Um, so they are looking for us to be giving them. The, the direction and the, the ultimately the yes, the yes, no. Um, they're going to. Uh, mediate our language to make sure it fits with sort of current nomenclature and, and legal uh, review and, and everything like that. So, um. Yeah, and I, I think for the moment, we, we would not, unless we really felt. Very compelled to submit a formal letter at this point to the bylaw review committee. We wouldn't do that. I think we would save that for. After draft one, right? Is that, does that feel? Uh, fair, um, fit, you know, effective? All right. Okay, okay. Um, good. Well, um. Yeah, um, it'll be useful to, um, the discussion on the fifth to get a, a better sense of. Timeline and, and flow and, and uh, the decision-making tree as well as uh, the, the next content discussion. Um, right. Uh, if there aren't any other comments, we can um, pick up item number five, which is. Uh, just a quick update on subdivision rules and regulations, which. I am. Yeah. Yeah, um, Bill, do you have any, um, any comments? I will, uh, before you start, say that. Um, with everything else that's been going on, this has uh, not uh, risen to uh, get enough of uh, our attention.
No, I agree. We, um, I haven't done anything to it pretty much since December. So, um. I don't know where we want to go from here with it. It's the formatting is what's left. Uh, the information's there. It's. Chunks of what we revised mixed in with what exists. Um if the bylaw review committee. Is reformatting anything. Should we wait? Or should we just keep our revisions in there like we have them and. Um submit them to be edited and updated to the online code.
Well, first of all, the bylaw review committee has nothing to do with this. This is our rules and regulations, so they don't. There's no reason for them to review it. The next step is to get it in some kind of. Cohesive formatting. I know we've tried this, get it somewhere close. And then get it to engineering for them to start rolling going through and commenting on it. Once they comment on it, then. We can. Give it to someone in town. Hopefully, we can actually, you know. Format it properly or whatever we need to do. To finish it off. Once we get it finished off and comments from um. DPW. Then we can basically vote on it and implement it. It's all we need to do.
Right. Yeah, I understand the bylaw review committee isn't going to, they don't have anything on it, but I was thinking more of formatting. Like how I still, it's it's a mystery to me. If it's the program or how the E-code is done. And all the indents and everything that just I couldn't replicate them in Word. Or is it even worth it? And however it gets uploaded, then it's. Fit, it fits into the format of the software.
Hey, Bill and Matt, is is it fair at this point to say that? Formatting aside. The content that we have right now. Re- uh represents the la- the latest and greatest from the last round of. Reviews and comments that we had as a board.
I would say so.
Yeah.
So in that case, is there anything that, I mean, to Matt's point, I think before we start. Falling down the the formatting rabbit hole, could, you know, is there anything preventing us from pushing this over to? To, you know. DPW and Bill Renaud at this point?
It it can. I mean, I already went down the formatting. I mean, Matt handed it off to me. To cross-reference with the code, um which I did and to reformat it. So I went deep down that for reformatting.
Yeah.
Hold. And yeah, I I would say if we just want to provide DPW and engineering with. What we have, so I'm just. Um looking in, looking in my folders for the latest.
Cause I what I'd advocate is, you know, I I don't know if it makes sense, but you know, the. Bill, I'd advocate that you push whatever the the last, the latest and greatest. With all the formatting that you've done to date, push it out to the balance of the this board. And then we have, we have to go over to. Engineering so they can provide their feedback and then let's just get, let's keep the content train moving. And make sure that we're in agreement on that. And then if we need to go. Find someone who's a word whiz or whatnot, or an E-code whiz, we, you know, I feel like that's a. A problem that we can, we can surmount once we get past the, we want to make sure that the the content is correct.
Right. I mean, I could, if it's worth it to do a quick screen share, I can show you. Um. The difference. That way it's just if. Or um. So let me back up a second. We we did receive comments from from Concom. I mean, this is going back to. Um June of twenty-two, we got comments um from Concom. Um looking through proposed. Concon comments. Yeah. So, yeah, I think if. Yeah. So what I have up on my screen, I'm just looking at what's on the E-code. So if you look at the procedure for subdivision uh submission and approval of preliminary and definitive plans. And it just goes down like section four with brackets around it, A, B, C, D, E, F. Like I have it set up where it's like four and I put the brackets in it and then I just use the formatting from Word, so it's not in brackets anymore. It just has the A with the with the parentheses, open parenthesis as like the the break. Which is just one of the features in Word that was the closest I could get to the brackets. And what's highlighted is anything that's changed is actually in red. So the regular, like all requirements listed in this general information, that was cross-reference to the section number. But then as you get down to D, we made edits to the existing walls and fences along the boundary line. And right-of-way, you to determine street right-of-way lines and parcel lot lines. So that's, that's where we've made some edits. Um so the next step would be to take what we have and send it off. To DPW in atten- attention, Bill Renaud. Is that? Where it should go?
Yeah, send it. Yeah, sorry, Matt.
Yeah, we we just need to, you know, write a letter saying that we're basically, we're reforming this, we've gone through it. Please comment on it and. Um, I know it's going to take a couple of months for them to do it, because this is not. Now, not going to be their top priority, but someone needs to pick a way at it, go through it, so.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I think, right, just sending it to Aaron and and Bill um.
Okay. Let me take care of that. I'll put that on my list of things to do.
But this. Do do, is there a clean copy and then a redline version or what? I I know I had a a. Uh you know. A copy as as it would be presented and then one of his redline because we want. Obviously, want, we want them to comment on. What. Ultimately, we want it to be.
Right.
Um but send the redline so they can see the the where things have been moved to and what's been added or subtracted.
So right, we have both. So yes, we have the the redline just. To just to highlight more or less what is being changed so they don't go crazy looking at each one and trying to compare what what changed. The same as like you would cloud a revision on a set of drawings, but in this case, it's just red versus the black.
Yep. And and I I'm a strong advocate that we actually lose the document. That. Um. We hold on to, so that that will be. Uh the benchmark because I have, I know the Latin, we had a book of. Um. What our rules and regulations were that I would bring to every meeting and then it went on E-code and there were definitely things that E-code changed. And then then we got into basically pissing matches, well. This is what E-code says and. I know they changed things on there and we were stuck with it, so. We need to have a document that is held somewhere. That is the official document and make sure that the E-code matches that. Not that we go with whatever E-code comes up with because. Right, again, these, the E-code, it's a free service. And they have someone toss it in there and then they they, you know. It's a free service to the town to do that. They'll, you know, sell it off to other people, but. Um. They're not the the brainchild of editing. One, I understand who they have putting this stuff in there, so. We just need to make sure that we can go back and verify that it does comply with our document.
Okay.
It's a good advice. All right, um. Um, thank you, Bill, for uh muddling through all of this and thanks uh Matt for. Having done lots of the content and to um. And and for being patient and um. Yeah, and. Yeah, well. We will see, we will see daylight at some point.
Well, you know, that now that the street naming, the street, the. Nick, street name change is done. That didn't take too long.
No, yeah, um, yeah, um. Uh, which is a nice transition to item number six. I uh. Items not anticipated by the chair. And so a round of applause to Bill. For uh. You know, a s- a solid presentation, um wowing town meeting.
Yeah, thanks. Well, I just. Thanks. That moment when I turned to. The moderator and said, do you want me to read the whole thing? I just wanted to make sure. Um. That I was able to summarize. And luckily, with knowing it, I was able just to summarize each section. I did have my cheat sheets in front of me, but. Still being able to just summarize each part definitely helped.
Yeah, um. Uh. Yeah, I I thought it was a really. Uh thoughtful and um. Uh effective summary. So I mean, and it wasn't that town meeting was exhausted by that point.
Right.
So, um, no, um. Uh, yeah, so. Well, well-written and well-presented, so I'm, yeah, and congratulations to the to all of us for helping to put it together. Um, so. And 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 congratulations to you, Bill, for leading it.
Oh, thanks. That was fun.
Um. Um. All right, so um the first of many bylaw uh improvements that we that we will be making. Uh so, um. Uh I have just, I have some housekeeping staff and some other things, like, do other people have items uh for discussion? The um, so. Um, one thing that came up, uh so uh was. Uh. Is um David Hadfield and uh and CBA were were talking about potentially putting uh. A revision and uh and uh. Uh something for the next town town warrant um about um. Our fees and uh, you know, modernizing them in the. Uh in the in the bu- in the bylaw, uh but Aaron has done some more work and uh. Uh talking about. Uh moving uh all the fees out of uh the bylaws and and into our regulations, which sounds. Uh really effective, so um we'll check back with her on on that score and. Uh how that that might work. So a potential uh bylaw revision would be. To take the fees out of the bylaw um and and put into our our regulations, um which makes it easier to do.
And Theo, I would note that Attorney Bobrovsky mentioned that as one of the the concentrations of the bylaw review committee. During the reconification, that he had a strong recommendation that. Ninety-five percent of fees are omitted from the bylaw as a general rule of practice.
Right. Um, so ma- yeah, may maybe that that's enough so that we don't have to push that forward as a separate. Uh action, um. But. To be, to be discussed with uh. Uh ZBH or Hadfield too, um so, um. In the the email, uh planning board email account, we got uh two letters recently. Um, one was um a really considerate um letter discussing uh. Uh accessible pedestrian street signals in town for uh visually impaired people. Um, I don't, I don't know a lot of the technical uh details of that, but I will um. If folks have any comments, um I'm going to forward that along. Um to Aaron and. And and others, um.
Yeah, Theo, I do have a comment. That's um, there's a bike ped plan that's been in review that the MAPC put together. And uh safe streets, we've reviewed it. It's in Aaron and um. Aaron Kokinda and Steve Mayo's hands to however they're going to proceed with it. And I know Bill Renaud has made many comments on it. And he has a, he has a whole timeline and not. The yesterday's um. Town council meeting, but the one before, he presented a whole plan where um their intersections and all, what's going into it, and they're starting with. The real uh to trail. Um intersections uh on Water Street and moving forward with a bunch of those. So. I think as the pedestrian safety north app has a plan for crossing, um if you've. Noticed um north app going northbound right after Vets Field, um next to the gas and light, there is. A safe pedestrian, the ones that blink as you go through, but. It's um, it's not like you press it, it comes on and a lot of the bulbs are already out, so I'm not sure where that came from. But there's um, there's definitely some effort that. Engineering and DPW have put into this plan. So I I don't know if, yeah, I would definitely forward it to Aaron. So she can put it together, put it in the same. Hold it with that.
Okay. Um, well, thank you.
Considering that most of the traffic detection. On the existing lights we have in town aren't functioning and aren't being repaired, I would say. Adding uh. You know. Additional traffic crossing pedestrians are pretty low on on the list, unfortunately, because. Infrastructure we have is not being maintained. So. I mean, it'd be nice for them to do something, but. Uh. I know about. Two intersections that the traffic detection actually works. The rest of them have all been taken out and it just doesn't work anymore, so. I know Greenwood is one of them where you have to basically wait for the entire cycle. Uh. To make a light, so.
Okay. Fair, fair point, um, thank you. All right, um, so that's, uh. Uh, that was, that was the first. And the second was. Um. Another letter from residents concerned about the hot street forty B, um which uh. Um. You know, has, you know, doesn't sit with us now, um so um acknowledging receipt, but no, uh. There's, you know, no follow-up to that letter, um. The um. Uh as Aaron has said, the master plan is currently uh. Being drafted by the consultant, um the first draft, uh they expect to submit to us. Um in mid-July and we'll um. Uh start to res- start to work it um and uh review it and uh hold some pu- public discussions around that, so. Um I'll work with her um. Uh to get a better sense of that timing and then um we can have a a a planning board meeting, looking at the calendar and and where. How things all fit in, um. So. Um, but uh optimistic that that um is going to produce a very useful document that's going to support a lot of. Uh all of our other uh work and and focus, um. MBTA communities and the bylaw review and and everything else, so um. More to come, um. And uh. As as we know, we have um our public hearing um on the subdivision, the definitive subdivision plan for one ninety-seven to hot. Um continues at the June thirteenth meeting, um. And uh I wondered, um lastly, what uh. If folks had any other agenda items for the June thirteenth meeting, um so we could. Uh put those together now and uh help build our agenda for the next meeting. We'll get an update from Aaron, uh MBTA uh communities. Um it looks like we will have zoning bylaw review uh. Follow-up uh um or or discussion, um, anything else? Um. Okay, okay, all right. Um, any other comments, uh thoughts? Well, um. Uh, that being said, um I appreciate the discussion and everybody's efforts to. Uh. Keep things uh moving effectively, um and we can get a a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion for adjournment.
All right, thank you, Matt. Um, second.
Second.
All right. And all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
All right, Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So, all right. Um, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, um. Yeah, uh, we'll be talking and see you on June fifth. All right, appreciate it, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, have a good night.
You too.
See you, everyone.